United States of America, and to the Republic of America, we give you the rule of liberty of justice for all.
Mr. Tuckey?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the Scranton-Lacawana Health and Welfare Authority meeting held March 21, 2019. 3B, Scranton-Lacawana Health and Welfare Authority combined financial statements for the years ended December 31, 2018, and 2017, and independent auditors' report. 3C, tax assessors' report. Four hearing date to be held July 17, 2019. 3D, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report, 2018-2019, year-to-date June 30, 2019. 3E, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to be held July 10, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have a few. The annual Scrantastic spectacular celebration will be held this evening on Courthouse Square. The event features music, food, and a fireworks display. Please be mindful of road closures. The public will have access to the parking garage on Linden Street. City Hall will be closed tomorrow in observation of Independence Day. DPW will also be off for the holiday. Refuse Collection and Blue Recycling will be one day behind schedule. Colts will be closed on Thursday in observation of the holiday. Regular bus and van service will resume on July 5. Council's next regularly scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, July 10 at 12:30 p.m. with the caucus at noon. We also did have an executive session prior to today's meeting regarding some potential litigation in a personnel matter. Before we move on with our regular business and fourth order, obviously, there are a lot of questions regarding the vacancy in the mayor's office and how that vacancy will be filled. I want to turn it over to our solicitor to discuss how things are spelled out in the Home Rule Charter and the Administrative Code, and then there'll be more discussion following.
Thank you. As you can imagine, I've done a great deal of research and consulted with city solicitor, assistant city solicitor, and today also met with them and the solicitor for the election board in an effort to get as many views as possible of the way forward from this problem that's been created by the mayor's vacancy. There are, as I can see it right now, three options to going forward on an appointment Council could do nothing theoretically, and that would kick it to the Court of Common Please to appoint somebody, and if the Court of Common Please appoints someone, that person would serve for the unexpired term of the mayor who's leaving. If council appoints someone, there is a dispute on that, what the term would be. Council certainly has the right to appoint someone. The question then becomes what would be the term of the appointment by council to the mayor's office. There are two schools of thought on that. One is governed by the Administrative Code, and one is governed by another portion of the charter, which I'll try and unmuddy as much as possible. The charter, in Section 602, deals with the election of mayor and his term. It says that if the mayor is in appointed position, that he shall be appointed according to Section 309 of the code. And I'm sorry for getting into the weeds on this, but just so as much understanding as can be made, I will try. Section 309 of the charter actually deals with the replacement for vacancy on city council, but it establishes a procedure by which someone is appointed. By virtue of that last sentence in Section 302, Section 309 gives a procedure for the appointment, and it limits the term to the till the next municipal election. So that would be one interpretation. That's the interpretation of the solicitor for the election board. There is a separate opinion on what the term could be based on the Administrative Code. The Administrative Code is very clear, and it says that if a vacancy occurs in the office of mayor, city council shall fill such vacancy within 30 days thereafter by choosing a mayor to serve for the portion of the unexpired term. So that makes that, that is very clear on the Administrative Code side. The Administrative Code clearly is in conflict with Section 309 of the charter. I will be writing an opinion, giving those options to council and getting it to them hopefully by next Tuesday. And if I'm able to find more information for them between now and then, I will include that.
And council did discuss possibly having a public meeting next week outside of our regularly scheduled meeting to discuss how this process would play out, so that will be publicly advertised. And we did talk about a couple dates. I don't think we have a firm decision on that yet, but there will be a public meeting regarding how the process is going to be structured once we receive the memo from Attorney Menora. So there will be much more to come on how this process is going to play out. I hope that gives some background on what the Administrative Code states and what the Home Rule Charter states in terms of filling the vacancy. I'm sure residents will have opinions on how they believe the appointment should be filled. We're certainly open to hearing your opinions at the meeting here tonight, and I know we all have much more to say on this as things progress.
Did you have more for me?
What was that?
Oh, you weren't asking me?
No.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just have one question, Solicitor Menora. I don't know if you would know this offhand, but if it is a special election, do you know how the candidates would be chosen? Obviously, it won't be a primary, it will be a general election. So are they chosen by the two parties, or how does that, do you know how that works?
It would be governed by the election code, which I'm not familiar with. At least, I'm not familiar with enough to give you an opinion right here today. Now, I don't know.
It's my understanding that the parties would pick the candidates, but we'll check into that.
I think that's correct, but again...
In council vacancies in the past, the parties have selected candidates, and there was a special election.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight, or today, is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Well, how the mighty are fallen. When you have this public meeting about how the next mayor will be selected, one of the things a lot of people are interested in is can the general public apply to be considered? If so, what are the qualifications an applicant would have to have? What are the deadlines? So can information like that be addressed in your next public meeting?
So I can answer some of that right now. The qualifications to be mayor is spelled out in the Home Rule Charter.
Okay, just refer to the charter.
Yep, so refer to the charter on that. I believe it's 18 years of age and lived in the city for one year.
Okay.
So those are the qualifications, is spelled out in the charter. As far as the process of taking applications, letters of interest, I think that's something that we're all open to. That's probably, and I probably shouldn't be saying this yet, but that's probably going to be part of the process.
Okay, so people that may have an interest in becoming the mayor?
Start getting your, start getting your letters ready now.
No, not me, not me, hey. You know, I'm retired, I'm not getting another car, none of that stuff.
But Joan, that'll be the crux of what we meet on next week, is that, how we're gonna lay that out, what the process is gonna be, as well as what decision we're gonna make as far as, is it gonna be an appointment by council and have a two-and-a-half-year term, or is it gonna be a special election and a six-month term? I don't think any of us want to punt and send it down to the county courthouse. We'd like to make that decision ourselves.
This public meeting you're gonna have, is it gonna be an afternoon session like this, or might you have it in the evening?
We haven't come up with a date yet.
Okey-dokey. So Lori will put it in the legals, right?
That will be, that will be publicly advertised.
Yeah, okay. I went to the press conference yesterday, and I was surprised and not a little disappointed that I didn't see a single official from the city. I would've thought one would've come, if nothing else, out of sheer curiosity. It was very educational. I've read through the charges and the plea agreement, and also very educational. But having done that, you know, I got the impression that there may be other personnel indicted down the road, some of whom may be city employees, okay? Some of them may be high-ranking city employees. So the first thing I want to know is, do you see any impact on the city's bond rating as all the dust begins to settle? Okay? Because we've come a long way, but this has really thrown a monkey wrench into the situation. And have you talked to Mr. Cross from Pell about whether there's any reaction from the state as we move to, towards exiting our distressed status?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Cross, actually, right before this meeting. We were scheduled, actually, to have Pell here next week to provide an update. We are going to postpone that meeting, because obviously, right now, the most pressing matter is putting together a process and getting a mayor in place.
Right, I understand that.
But no, we have, I have this, I have had conversations with Mr. Cross.
Okay, so I hope we get some clarification on that. Just from me personally, I strongly suggest, since you have the auditors here now, they need to take a microscope to the lips department, okay? Based on what I read and what I heard in the press conference, if they have not been sensitized to operations in that department before, they need to look at everything and assume, and not make any assumptions and not take anything for granted. They need to look at every piece of paper and every audit trail and every record, because clearly, something is wrong. And if you would, in fifth order, tell us what you think is gonna be done with the contract with Northeast Revenue Services. I'm a little nervous about that. What other contracts might you be looking at, having, knowing what's happened in the recent past? One that I'm still not happy with is this long-term contract with Rainey and Rainey. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dobson?
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer, and voter. Once again, here we are. We need a new reset button. I would like to entertain something with you people. The summer schedules and, if somebody has a vacation cottage or whatever in August, that's okay, but I think we should suspend the daytime meetings, and I think we should also suspend, in view of the circumstances, this year, the summer recess. That's just common sense, I think. Parking is a problem. Last year, I got bopped at least $24 over a month, and I had to sneak out of here early. I'll have to sneak out of here today, because I was at a meter, and you can't put more than two hours. I paid a quarter for two extra minutes. Public employees, please find an honest broker if you want to support somebody. This is totally ridiculous. It was from day one, obviously, going on, and people that offer bribes should be charged along with the briber. Get them to snitch each other out, offer them reduced sentences if they'll come clean. But we have to clean this up, and businessmen that do dishonest business have to be held responsible. It's just ungodly. We had two commissioners that were accused of taking bribes, spent years in prison, and everybody else just, they got to walk scot-free. If they didn't offer it, then there wouldn't be any special treatment. It's also time that we renew the Home Rule Charter. Two terms only for executive. I think that was an idea of years, years back, Wayne, and it just gets to the point where you have an executive branch that's so far entrenched, even by the second term, that we don't need it. And on the city hall issue, it's time you get a grant writer, apply for the grant, the whole enchilada, $5 million. State and county owes us. Thirty-six percent of our town is tax-exempt, some for good reasons, some not. Ten percent are not paying. And by the way, if somebody could please inform me of one amoroso deal that isn't tied up in court, I'll apologize for saying what I did. It's just everything. We didn't have the right to get other people helping us with the sewer plant, even though the law said, and we had been doing that for years with outlier communities and people with, well-heeled people that can build cool-to-socks out in Poconos or wherever, and they sell their sewer plant to PA American Water, and part of your water bill reflects their living standard. I don't need to pay a sewer bill or a water bill for, you know, somebody with a half-million-dollar home out in the, out in the sticks. We don't need any sweetheart deals on this, and a special election should be called for. Two and a half years is a long time. If it's a couple months, it's one thing, but two and a half years is a very long time. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
I'll probably have to, I'm recording you guys, so at home.
Thank you.
I'll be keeping an eye out.
Bob Wallace?
Bob Wallace, Scranton. First off, I'd just like to say, there's gonna be a 2020 Trump tour for President Trump at the Radisson at 4:00 p.m. Saturday. All President Trump supporters are invited. Councilman Gahan, I've asked you many times, I've given you written letters, I'm asking for your response today to the three matters that I gave you. The first issue was regarding the Steam Town Mall for $4.5 million and where the 500 parking spaces are. I've requested it many, many times. You had said you had sent a letter, you had done this stuff, and of course, you lied to me about the letter. You lied here publicly that you had sent the letter. That's one question I'd like an answer. The second one matter was the Naog parking spaces. Patting yourselves on the back, I ask you why you weren't involved and see that we had a better deal? I couldn't get a response. Well, I filed an injunction against it and stopped the Naog deal. Right now, until we get to the bottom of why we're giving taxpayer money away, that we've had enough of that. I couldn't get a response from you on that. The third issue was the favorable sweetheart deal that you gave Pat Hinton, the city inspector here. I asked that investigation go into him, or an ethics violation be filed. You refused to do that and haven't done it. Could I have an answer to my questions?
The first?
The first one, I've explained before, I really have explained that before. You were standing up here, and I explained it. I think I explained it at one meeting. The second one regarding Naog Park, we don't, we don't have anything to do with that. That is the Recreation Authority. They're the ones that negotiated that deal, so we would have no say in that, number two. And number three, the question about Mr. Hinton, I'm the one that actually brought that up and asked our solicitor to look into it. He issued an opinion, and that was the end of it. I don't, still don't agree with it. There's nothing more that this council can do, quite honestly.
Okay, but on the parking authority, the 500 parking spaces for 4.5 million, you never gave me the straight answer. You told me, "Go to the Parking Authority and get my own answer." And I feel that's a total violation, and we don't have to do it. But let me take a step further. I'm filed under an injustice violation. Were you lying to me, said you sent a letter? I want to back the hearing regarding it. Issues regarding this city and the games played, that whole deal with the Parking Authority at the mall stinks, has a bad stench to it, because nobody's come up and ever showed us where the 500 spaces are for four and a half million dollars of our money. And I'd like an answer. So there was an injunction filed against Naog. I also filed against Charlie Spano, because I want to know where his money came that he gave into a campaign. It's a sad day in the city with Mayor Gar, well, with Bill. I've known Bill for over 40 years, and I still consider him a friend, and I want to know my friendship is still there. He made a mistake, he caused a lot of problems for himself and the city, but I still think he's a great guy. Deep down where he was, he just screwed up, but we shouldn't turn our back on. Look at some of the good he did before we look at all the bad. And he has my support. If he ever needs friendship or a call, he could always make it. The other part is, I'm gonna clear some things up here that were brought up about Rothschild. A reporter sitting here made a statement, that I made statements about her, but she wasn't here. She has as much choice to coming here. I have nothing to do to stop her in any way, shape, or form. I'm here, and I left my company today and my business, so if she wants to come here and say something, this is an open forum, and I resent that kind of a comment that I stopped her. She works for Lehigh Valley Health Systems and Community Drive in Toby Hannah. She's employed by Lehigh Valley Hospital. She's not an employee here in the city, and neither is her wife. Don't come and tell me your advocacy is gonna bring professional people here, and you're gonna give them a job. You lead by example, so if you don't work here and you're not employed here, don't tell me what you're gonna bring to this city. What we want is experienced individuals sitting at this council. We've had enough of the nonsense that has gone on here, and it has to come to a stop.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Fay Frannis?
I would just like to say how I feel about this, and I'm sure many other people in the city feel the same way. I know you have certain options that you have to follow, and I'm guessing that one of them is the way you must go. I don't know. Is that what Mr. Menora said, that one of them you must, shall have to do, or is it your choice to pick one of the three?
There's different legal interpretations on which way is the proper way to proceed. Both of them can be open to legal challenges.
Okay, well, here's how I feel, and I think many other people feel. Considering all that's happened in the city, I would think that this new mayor and this new government would want to have as much transparency as ever and honesty and trust for the people. Therefore, I absolutely think, if it's all possible by law, or if you could do it, there should be an election for the people to pick their mayor. That's why we're here, not to have someone else like you pick for us. We go to vote, and we have, excuse me, we have to have people representing us, not someone that we did not vote for. So if you really want to start off on the right foot, that would be the way to go. And I don't think appointing any one of yourselves would be transparent in any way. That, to me, would just shine a cronyism. It's not what we want. We want to be able to have a say as to who our mayor is and who is gonna represent us. So if that's at all possible, I'd appreciate it. As far as the contract for the collection agency, I think that should be dissolved as quickly as possible. I don't know if you have to wait to the end of their term, but considering the fact that they paid to get this job, and somebody else couldn't get it, and the fact that when they came here, you even said yourselves up there that they didn't answer any questions, you asked them how much money they collected already, they didn't know. So they're not helping us. They haven't helped us. They need to go. And as far as the other people that paid, they should go too. Now, is there any other information on the garbage fee? Anything that was done on that?
As far as what?
As far as you were gonna look into how you were gonna collect the fee in different ways.
Well, we know the escrow account was on our agenda, so I'm not sure if we get that, if we're gonna vote on that tonight or not. Once that's established, we can go down that path and use that as a tool.
For the renters?
Yeah, yeah.
But what about the law that I stated before? Chris Kelly even said, the law says, the city administrative codes say, if they don't pay their garbage fee, the DPW does not have to pick up their garbage. So we're paying for our next-door neighbors and such that don't pay, and it's infuriating. So why don't you look into this? I mean, nobody's doing anything. Mr. Gahan, thank you for taking care of that matter on that truck, but I just want to add this. Is there any way you could follow up on this? Because now they moved it from the lot to the street, and that's still in our residential, has license on it now, but it's still a residential neighborhood with a big tractor-trailer parked in front of a house.
Yeah, we'll send it to follow-up licenses.
Whoever went and corrected it and moved from the lot, put it on the street, that's still illegal. So I hope that wasn't like, that's good enough, because it's not.
Okay.
Because that's still illegal.
Is it a tractor-trailer cab fee? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's a huge, huge, it's a great big one.
That's a violation of an ordinance, it's a $100 fine if it's parked on the street.
Well, it was parked in a lot in the back of his house, and Bill took care of it, and I guess now, today, it was out in the street. Didn't have a license or anything, but now it's on in front of the house.
It's illegal to park it on the street.
So because whoever came there and told him to move it and put a license on it and stuff, I didn't think that was wrong.
No, if it's that... No, if it's that type of truck, it's illegal.
Yeah, it's a big tractor-trailer, but nothing in the back, but huge.
Yep.
So it's a 307 South Ninth Street.
We'll refer that to the chief again.
Okay, and thank you very much. And I hope you please, please think about what the people want and have a vote, and they have a say in who becomes the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Hello, Council. I really don't have a comment about Mayor Bill, except for, for some, this wasn't a bombshell. I think the bombshell's going to come in a discussion on the intermediates. But I do want to comment on you, Brother Bill, for your outrageous, unnecessary attack of anger on me last week about Jessica. I repeatedly, three or four or five times, said I couldn't care less about her personal life, no interest at all about me. She is the one that has made it controversial. She's the one that exposes it and keeps on wanting talk of it. Not me, not Bob Bowles. It's her. She has nothing in the world to offer for that seat up there, nothing. She is the worst of the worst candidates humanly possible to find, especially at this time. You know, we desperately need people with, that are qualified, that have the merits for this position coming up. There's two positions. We don't need to have someone say, "Vote for me, I'd pity," because this is senseless. I was at the tourist club a couple times. You think I'm a racist, anti-Semitic, anti-American, anti-Catholic person because I don't think she belongs up there? I never see the city get divided over something like this. There's no need in it. What we need to do, if you ask me, is have some write-in candidates, because this is such an important post coming up. The mayor resigning changed a lot of things, lots of things. I don't know. You know, it seems to be, if you gentlemen all have further ambitions politically, you'd come down off this ivy tower of yours and join the people of this city. Mr. Bowles isn't running for an office, and he has this dinner every year. There's thousands there. There's a lot of potential votes there. Not a one of you ever come. I know Mr. De Naples, Bob, was it last year? Last year, Louis King? He walked around and shook hands and talked to people. He's not running for an office. Bob and his volunteers are just, they give up. It's just more than one day. But nobody from this city was represented there, except some of the people that come here. That's shameful. It's not right. You know, I don't have much to give for this city, except my time, and I will always stop it and try to talk to someone. I've been in bad weather. I've delivered for Mr. Bowles the dinners, and you can't imagine the appreciation people have. I've been asking the houses, and you'd think I was a member of their family or something, just bringing them a little dinner or stuff. A couple days ago, I was leaving Garrity's, and some, someone come up to me and was talking about something just real trivial that I wasn't the least bit interested in. And I had, I had two Klondike bars, and I kept thinking, "This is so, nothing to do with me." And my bars were melting like hell in the sun, but I stood there about 10 minutes listening to something. That's because I love this city and these people, like Bob does, and Mr. De Naples, and all these volunteers, and these peoples that come here and make comments and suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
But you people just don't represent us anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
My name is Ed Wu-Mix. I live at 95 Lynnwood Ave. here in Scranton. My problem is, my house and literally my property's being washed away from the improper drainage and the pitch of the road of Florida Ave. and Lynnwood Ave. And I want to commend Councilman Bill Gahn. He knows what I'm talking about here. In the last September, I brought it to the attention of the city about this whole ordeal, who then submitted a letter to the head of DPW, Dennis Gallagher. Well, he sent Mr. Pochus out not too much time afterwards, who only spent five minutes at my house. Got nowhere with him. Now, sometime after that, I cited the head of the Conservation District here in Lack One County, maybe to assist me in the whole problem, who brought with him at the time the Assistant City Engineer. His name was Chris. I don't know his last name, but he recognized that there was a bad problem. He took all kinds of pictures, all kinds of data, whatever it may be, submitted a report back to the head of DPW, Dennis Gallagher. Again, I heard nothing from him whatsoever. Then I cited a Mr. Dave Bowman from the Channel 16, and he did come out and interview me about the whole situation. He recognized that I had a problem. Somehow, this Dennis Gallagher got wind of it, got wind of it. He then brought out their head city engineer out to my house with his assistant, who was, again, Chris, out to my house, and he recognized I had a problem. Again, I heard nothing. When he left, I heard nothing about it whatsoever. And it's sad. Here, I pay almost $6,000 a year in taxes in a state, in the city of Scranton, and I get not even a phone call from this gentleman who was appointed wherever from the city of Scranton in his job. But I let it go at that time, but then this whole ordeal happened with the city former mayor, and that's why Dave Bowman never televised it, because he knew that something else would come out of it, hopefully. And hopefully, something today will come out with this meeting with you gentlemen here. But I'm also a disabled Marine, but also retired from the state of Pennsylvania, Pendant. I know exactly what should be done to this road. It's not being done with the city of Scranton, nothing whatsoever. And I need to see from you gentlemen if something could come from this. And if it doesn't, I'll give you miniature doubt. I will not, no longer stand by or sit back, but if nothing comes out of this, I will take promise, a solution myself in one another means.
Thank you. If you could leave your contact information with our Assistant City Clerk. I don't know if Mr. Gahn has it already, but...
Yeah, I have, but we sent a letter and copied it.
He sent the letter. He sent various letters.
Yep, we'll follow up.
Heard nothing, nothing about it. He has my phone number. He had my phone number. All these people who came to my house had my phone number. Not one phone call whatsoever.
I will mention it to the DPW Director, and we'll look into it to see where it stands.
Please, gentlemen, help me out in this, because my house and my property's been literally being washed away because of the problem of Florida Ave. and Lynnwood Ave. And it doesn't take much to rectify the problem either. I get no answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Glennish John, city resident. I just wanted to start out today just with a few of my own opinions today, and I really do think that the city of Scranton should not tolerate any hate, bigotry, racism, or corruption in this city. And I am not shocked by the mayor's resignation at all, at the least bit, but I do believe with two and a half years of an unexpired term, there should be a special election. I think the city should be able to, and residents should be able to, look at the people who are running in a transparent way. I feel like right now, there are so many people who are tangled into this mess, and I think whoever is going to take over the position of being mayor of this city should be vetted by the community, should be vetted by the city. I know there's a few options on the table, but if there's a way in which that we, as citizens, can see who will be representing us, I, as a resident, would feel more comfortable knowing exactly before they're appointed who will be representing me. Because at this point, I don't want to see taxpayer money being misused, mishandled, people not being able to trust the folks that represent us here. So those are just my opinions. I have, I'm still very optimistic for the city. I have high hopes for the city. I think we have a lot of folks that are running for positions in office who are going to make really amazing changes here. We have a lot of amazing community leaders that are doing fantastic things. We have a lot of people that are devoted to the city, who know so much about policy, who know much, so much about the city from the inside and out. So I think there are a lot of folks who probably would be willing to run for mayor or be a part of the process in any way. I just hope that you all continue to give us as much information as possible. Keep us informed, because this is a serious situation, and I really feel like, yeah, we, as citizens, deserve, and residents, deserve to be involved in this process as much as possible. So I just wanted to make my statements clear to you all, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Marie Schumacher. Regarding filling the vacancy of the mayor's office, I too would like to see an election with as much time as left in this term, if that's chooseable. But down to the business of the day, 7B, would that be by ordinance? Or is that?
B, yeah, let me bring it up.
So the downtown residential parking?
Pardon?
The downtown residential parking, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's by ordinance.
That would be by ordinance. It would come before this body, not just do it.
No, it's by ordinance, right.
Okay. And I assume 500 Lack One Avenue issue was still tabled?
Yes.
But I would like to know, has anybody checked to see, verify how much we paid for that lot when we bought it? And whether or not the, I thought the 500 Renaissance loan had to been repaid by this time. Does that still have a balance? Maybe, I don't know who has.
The items that were tabled last week, to put it frankly, are going to remain tabled for a couple more weeks. I haven't looked into any of those items since then.
Okay, then, moving right along. Rental registration has been an issue. I stood here at this podium and told the members of your body countless times, although faces have changed, that the Sewer Authority had hired somebody to go door-to-door, and they knew every rental property there was. And I believe it may have been requested and refused from the authority. But if you people had been as involved as you really should have been in that whole Sewer Authority sale, or asset sale, then I think one of the items should have been providing that information. But since it's gone by the wayside, I do not know why you cannot at least ask the electric company to provide the number of bills they send out to each property. That would give you, I mean, certainly, probably some landlords provide the electricity for their tenants, but I'm sure also you would get a whole lot more if you knew how many bills went out for each property. Or conversely, you're hiring, you've talked about hiring interns. Why not send the interns walking properties and count how many electric meters there are at each property? You would certainly get a lot more instead of, you know, doing something, at least to get this resolved. And I hope that with everything that's going on in the city, you start taking advantage of what we already have. Stormwater is one. We haven't heard about an authority for months now. We waited for that Arcata study and were disappointed, and now here we are again with all these stormwater issues. There was one raised again today. There are lots. When are you going to get back to that? Unpaid trash bills. What are you going to do about that? City Hall. What are you going to do about that? How are we going to do the capital expenses? Are we going to do them piecemeal? Are we going to go out and borrow money and do it right the first time? Home rule charter. You people have the ability to vote on establishing a study committee for the home rule charter. That needs to be done. This was brought up a couple of years ago now, and it's still bobbling out there. I still have...
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds left, right? Okay. There was an article in the paper, a letter to the editor. I'm sure you read. Everybody read Ron Koljeski's letter to the editor? Okay. Would somebody explain to me, maybe two of our, our real estate people here? How would that be done? Now, it's, there is an inference here that that has been done. May I finish?
Sure, another 10 seconds.
Okay. How would that be done? We have a lot of properties that are owned by the University of Scranton. Do, for instance, the bookstore up at the corner, do they, does that bookstore pay? And how is that reflected on the books of who pays which square footage?
Yeah, every property has to be audited to find out which ones are actually revenue generating, and they would be paying taxes appropriately for that space. That was true, and it should be true in any venture like that. For example, the University of Scranton has Chick-fil-A, and they have other ones within that are privately owned companies. So that's something that can be done. It can be audited and pulled out and taxed appropriately. So he is correct. That could happen.
It could or would?
It could. Well, it would probably require a court case, but yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a couple of quick comments here. Well, first, I want to apologize for our late start to our meeting today. As you can imagine, there was a lot to discuss and cover. You know, we're feeling a lot of things right now. I know I'm in the pool with most people. You know, I'm upset, I'm angry, I'm disappointed. But, you know, unfortunately, this body is charged right now with finding the successor to the next mayor. And we make, we have to make sure, we're a crucial part right now for the future of Scranton. We've accomplished a lot of great things in the last couple of years, and we can't afford to have any setbacks right now. At the same time, we need to make sure that we continue city services and we start to heal and regain the trust of the citizens of the city. Because right now, if you're like me, you don't feel really great about yourself right now. And we need to start the process of taking care of that. And that, that's going to start with, I believe, our selection process and finding a leader of this city. And we're going to do our due diligence to make sure we do the very, very best to make sure we have the very best leader in this city going forward. When I first realized, and this came to light, that it would be this body, the five of us, to choose... that it would be this body, the five of us, to choose the next mayor for the remainder of the term, you know, I understood that that's kind of what the, you know, anticipation of the event and how it was going to work out. But it wasn't quite the best. I thought maybe we could do things a little better. And I'm 100% in the camp of, of a special election coming up for the next mayor. I, I do not believe that a two-and-a-half-year appointment would do our city due justice. I think we need to appoint someone for six months and hold a special election. This city needs an official that's been elected by this city. That's the best way going forward. That's my opinion. That was one of the ways that this may shake out. That's what I, that's how I want it to shake out. I want an election, and I want, I think we need to, and we will. We'll be holding some special meetings. One of them will be coming up next week, next Tuesday. Well, we'll talk about more of the process and how we're going to find our candidate. Right now, this candidate, it hasn't been determined yet if it's going to be a six-month appointment or a two-and-a-half-year appointment. I already told you the way I feel. And, you know, we're going to go through that, and we're going to make sure that we appoint the very best person as a consensus. Because we, we're at a, like I said, we're at a really crucial part right now. And we have to make sure that we, that we just stay forward. We keep the city moving. We don't miss a beat. And at the same time, repair the damage that has been done. You know, I live here. I've lived here my whole life, and I'm not going anywhere. I, I don't like the stigmatism attached to us, what people say. I know it only takes one or two actions, or, or bad deeds, and it kind of contaminates the whole pool. But I tell you what, you know, there's a lot of great people in this city, and there's a lot of great people in this building right now that work really hard every day, and are committed to doing what they have to do. And I don't want to change that. I just want to put more on top of that and keep rolling forward. You know, there's going to be a lot more said about it, and I, I speak for myself right now, not speaking for anybody else. I'm sure everybody else has their own feelings. It took a couple of days for me to, you know, to kind of calm down, get a hold of everything, and then with a straight, level head, figure out what, what's the best course of action, what I think we need to do. We'll have some more debates coming forward on what we're going to do. Some of them will be calm, some of them will be heated. But they'll all be, they'll all be above the board. They'll all be done in daylight, and that I can promise you. I believe, Joan, you brought up the bond rating. You know, we know what happened last time with our bond rating, when we had such an influx in our city, and such a lack of trust within our city. And anybody in the financial world knows what, you know, anything. It's, your bond rating is, it's a fickle being. It's a fickle beast. And anything could affect it, and this is something that very well could affect it. And that's something else that our decision, and our process of making that decision's going to affect. You know, how smooth is this transaction done? And do we continue to have the faith of the financial world? Well, to continue a good bond rating, which is one of the successes, one of the reasons why we have so many successes recently, is because we haven't looked favored in the banking community. So, we need to hold on to that as well. And Ms. Schumacher brought up all the other things in the city that, guess what? They're not going away. We still have a city hall issue. We still have rental registration issue. You know, we still have stormwater coming down. There is, nothing goes away because we're having a problem. That just means we all take a bigger piece of the pie to make sure everything is getting done. I spoke to Mr. Rogan the day of, and I, I let him know if there's anything that he needed from me, he can call me. I'm a phone call away. You know, this was thrown in his lap, taking over, and I'm sure, and I know he's going to do the best job he possibly could. And, but he's going to need the support of everybody around him to make sure it happens. It's not something he planned on, on taking on Monday afternoon, but that doesn't change the fact that it's not on his plate now. So, we all have things we're dealing with right now that we didn't think we're going to have to deal with. And we just have to, for, you know, that's why we were elected. That's why we're here, to make sure we're taking care of this. So, again, if, if that means meeting with department heads to see where they are on different issues, that maybe we weren't really, that was more of an administrative task. You know, as a legislation body, you know, we're more of a conduit from the citizens to the administrative body. We take issues, and we bring them to, you know, we get them to where they need to go. Administrator makes, administration makes the call, and kind of helps with the process of solving the problems. And, you know, and then of course, we have our meetings, which we take care of legislation issues that come down. But you know, that, we're still elected. And we still work for the city, and we still, we're representative of the City of Scranton. So, that might mean we might have to take more of a hands-on approach when it comes to department heads, to get caught up, like Edwin today with the Court of Florida and Linwood. You know, we're all going to have to be in the loop on to see where Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Postus left that project off on. We're going to have to come up with speed with that, because maybe if that's something Mr. Gahan can't get to, then maybe Mr. Donahue or myself could help that Edwin along the way. So, there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to really get used to as we're getting this whole process underway. And, you know, it's, right now, it's, it's kind of, we're in a holding pattern, and then it went like that. And so, you know, we, we have, we have a good game plan started. Tuesday, we'll know better on what we're going to do. And by our next meeting next Wednesday, we'll be well underway with the process, with the game plan, the parameters, and then we'll have more going forward. Because the sooner we can get a leader in place, the better we will be. But we're not going to make haste and just, and put someone in, or put them in the wrong way without giving it adequate thought. Because, you know, this is going to be, for lack of a better word, a six-month, or a two-and-a-half-year decision that we're about to make, and it's going to affect a lot of people. You know, there's 72, 76,000 of us out there that are going to depend on our decision that we're going to make in the next couple of days. And so, while timing is of the essence, it makes absolutely no sense to hurry up to finish this process, because it won't make any sense to anybody. So, we'll use up probably most of that time that we have, at least getting up to that date that we have, the 30 days to, to get this problem and our issue solved. But, you know, there'll be, it'll be like a duck on water. We'll look calm on the surface, but there'll be things going constantly underneath the water. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, just to start off by, because it was brought up in public comment about Northeast Revenue Service. I believe their contract should be voided immediately and put out for RFQ as soon as possible. Tomorrow's the 4th of July, which is actually my favorite holiday. It's because it's a day where all Americans can come together to celebrate not only the birth of this nation, but those ideals, but also the ideals that were set forth in the founding document. We haven't always lived up to those deals, ideals. But we always come the closest when we are united, when we collectively come to the conclusion that is far more that unites us than that divides us. The events and revelations over the last 48 hours have not only been shocking, but quite frankly, they are unfathomable. Since Monday, since Monday afternoon, I've had this pit in my stomach, that feeling you get when you wrap disgust, sadness, and anger in one big ball. I'm disgusted that from day one, the former Mayor felt entitled to put his own interests above the interest of each and every city, each and every citizen he was elected to represent. I'm sad for the city employees, who come to work every day, do their job honorably and to the best of their ability, and who now have to have this cloud of suspicion hanging over their heads. But most of all, I'm angry. I'm angry that the former Mayor chose to run this city like a mob bus, instead of being responsible steward of this government. I'm angry that he did all this, while at the same time throughout this city, we have citizens, especially senior citizens, that are struggling to keep their homes. As we heard tonight, we had people, we have people whose homes are flooding, their property is being altered, because the city doesn't have a system to adequately handle that. While homeowners have to watch blighted properties in their neighborhoods become worse and worse, and more frequent. When you struck, when you put the struggle, those struggles, plus many more that residents throughout this city face every day, into the context of what the former Mayor has admitted to in federal court, that in all, then add in all the problems and investigations involving the school districts and the county, it all just, quite frankly, just pisses me off, because we are better than that. I know we are. Throughout my time on this council, Councilman Gahn and myself have continually been called and labeled as obstructionist for posing questions to, and demanding answers from this administration, from the former administration. But that is what we were elected to do. That needs to end. We all need to tune out the people who only want to tear people down. Instead, we need to concentrate on picking people up. That is what leadership is. Moving forward, the status quo must change. We must dramatically and fundamentally change the way this city does business. But we must do it together. We all need to be united in a common cause of restoring faith in city government, and working in the best interest of each and every resident. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. It's almost impossible to describe the range of emotions I felt since Monday afternoon. Emotions we all felt, from shock and sadness, to rage and disgust. When public officials betrayed the public trust to the degree that was described in detail by the U.S. Attorney at its press conference yesterday, it should be disheartening to everyone that truly cares about this city. The feelings I felt while listening to Mr. Freed's accounting of what was taking place in and around this very building will be with me for the rest of my life. And we can never let something like that happen in this city again. You know, in so many ways, we've come so far. We've made some great strides in the last five-plus years, since I've been on council. This city council has done its very best to be vigilant, transparent, and open. So, yes, condemn the actions of our former Mayor, because his actions deserve your condemnation. But also remember the good work of this body, and some key members of the administration, as well as the many city employees who come to work each day and do their very, very best for all of us. You know, we all have a lot of work to do to restore your trust. And we will continue to do everything to do just that. You know, we really have no choice. It is our charge now. It is our responsibility. It is our mission. Because as elected officials, at least for now, there is no one else to lead but the five of us. We all love Scranton. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. In fact, you wouldn't be here if you didn't love the City of Scranton. It is our home. It is our city. So, it begins. Today, like every day, is another chance to make this city a little better. So, let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, this has been an absolutely devastating week for the City of Scranton, for Lackawanna County, and for, I think, the whole region. I am personally, as my colleagues are as well, outraged, sickened, and repulsed by the facts brought forth from the FBI's investigation. I do want to thank the FBI, the Department of Justice, and the U.S. Attorney, Mr. Freed, for their investigation. And I was pleased to hear yesterday that the investigation is ongoing. And I think they're forming some sort of task force to combat public corruption in northeastern Pennsylvania. It's no secret, when I first got involved in politics back in 2013, people assume, and now rightly so, that the city and this area is corrupt. It is a stench that we can never, we could never get rid of. And that has always bothered me, and this just confirms that. The blatant corruption that occurred within these walls undermines the good public servants who honestly try to serve this city. And yes, they do still exist in this building. I feel very sorry for every taxpayer in this city who must feel cheated and outraged as well. The actions that have gone on over the last few years overshadow some of the good things that have actually occurred in this city since 2014. It's important now for this council to reverse the damage that has been done. At this point, it's my belief that there is a major crisis of confidence in the City of Scranton. While the results of the investigation are horrifying on every level, and confidence in local government is at an all-time low, I think that this situation actually presents an incredible opportunity to start doing things the right way once and for all. We must restore people's faith that our government works for them, that our public officials work for the people and don't, aren't trying to live off of them. One of the first ways that I think that we can do this is to ensure that the process for appointing a new Mayor is done openly and done fairly. The appointment process and ultimate selection of the new Mayor is the first step in restoring faith and confidence in this city. It's my belief that we should solicit letters of interest and resumes from the public, and then conduct public interviews, and put these candidates through a vetting process. We all want continuity and stability for the city. And by the end of July, we should install a new Mayor to shepherd through a new era for the City of Scranton. In the caucus preceding this meeting, we did hear from Solicitor, Solicitor Menora, who laid out several options, whether or not we'll have to have a special election. I did ask that Solicitor Menora put all of his comments into writing. I would like a legal interpretation of all of that before a decision is made. The Charter gives us 30 days to appoint a new Mayor, and I do not think there is any reason not to utilize the next few weeks to be as democratic, democratic in this process as possible with the appointment. Choosing someone for this job should not be rushed at all. We need to make sure that this is done the, the right way. And we need to make sure that whoever this person is, is qualified and can do the job. That is so important. We're talking about a city with over $100 million budget every year, and 76,000 people, and we are the county seat. I also want to add on that point that I will not be a candidate for this appointment. And I only bring that up because the speculation is driving, quite frankly, driving me nuts, as I'm sure it is some other people as well. Because you have people that want to know what, what is going on. So, I entered a program last year to earn my educational administrative certification, and I'm still enrolled and currently taking classes. So, that would preclude me from being a candidate, or being a candidate for the appointment, or a candidate if there is a special election. Finally, during this tumultuous time, we need to do everything in our power to ensure that the city government continues to operate to address the needs of our residents and to keep the city on track. Also, on a secondary point about NRS, and I had mentioned this to the newspaper when they had called me the other day, I agree that this contract needs to be terminated. Solicitor Menora, I would like you to please review the contract again to see in what way the city can terminate it at this point, what role council can play in that. I believe we have to give 90 days' notice, but I think that should be reviewed, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. I do want to make a point, because I had, you know, when the, the NRS thing had come out, and I read it in the, in the documents provided by the U.S. Attorney, I remembered back to 2015. We had a caucus with Ron Kolgeski, who was the Lackawanna County Deputy Director for Tax Claims. And in that caucus, he discussed the collection of delinquent city taxes. And the point that he made was that the, the county would be willing, the County Tax Claim Bureau would be willing to be the City of Scranton's collector of delinquent taxes. And we sent a letter on June 30th to the Mayor, asking him to give that, his consideration, and advise council if he was willing to proceed with that appointment. Because at that time, it was my opinion that that would make total sense. You would cut out the middleman. They were willing to do it. They had all the, they had everything in place to do that and do it correctly. We did not hear from the Mayor, and we had to send a follow-up letter July 24th at my request. July 29th, we received the following letter from the Mayor. "This letter is in response to your letter dated July 24th, 2015, wherein council inquired into the collection of delinquent city taxes. The city solicitor and the business administrator are still reviewing the viability of appointing the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau as a city delinquent tax collector. I will provide you with more information regarding this matter as it becomes available." We never received any more information regarding this matter. And I'm assuming that it was never available. Now, four years later, this makes sense, on why you wouldn't want to take the common sense approach and appoint the County Tax Claim Bureau to do that, because of all of the things that have gone on between the Mayor and Northeast Revenue Services. But it goes without saying that we cannot, in good conscience, continue with the contract with NRS. I mean, we had concerns to begin with, as it was, without all of the facts that were presented. So, I actually talked to the business administrator this morning, and he agreed with me on that point. And he's also reviewing how we would get out of this contract. I also think, as it relates to the co-conspirators and intermediaries, I think any city employee, city official, who had anything to do with what went on in this building and outside in regards to bribery, extortion, everything else, they, and I don't know if we'll ever know their names, but they should do the right thing and resign immediately. We need to clean house with anybody who had anything to do with what went on here the last four years. And I can't imagine that a city employee, or anyone else for that matter, a business or another entity, would have the conscience to come into this building, to sign in or punch in or whatever and collect a paycheck and you were a part of that. That is an absolute disgrace. So again, I don't know that we'll ever know who those people were, I know the investigation is ongoing, but I would just say, as a matter of doing the right thing, those people should resign immediately. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of comments. Obviously, as council president, I've been thrown into this more than, more than others. So on Monday, I did have, I think it's been well-publicized, a meeting with Attorney Menora and our city solicitor regarding the process of filling this appointment for a permanent mayor. Tuesday, I did have a cabinet meeting with, with all the members of the cabinet just to be sure that everything continues to operate as normal within the departments. By and large, we have great department heads in the city of Scranton, we have great employees, I think of, as all of our colleagues up here had mentioned. And during this time, it's critical that the residents don't have any disruption, so obviously that's a top priority at this time. Second priority is obviously appointing a permanent mayor, whether it be an appointment for six months or an appointment for two and a half years, depending on your interpretation of the city charter and the administrative code. Personally, I'm in favor of a short-term appointment and having a special election. If that can be allowed under the code, that's the preference that I have. I think at the end of the day, when the voters get to decide who's going to serve the vast majority of the remainder of this term, that's a much better solution than the five of us making that determination. Obviously, there are a lot of inconsistencies between the Home Rule Charter and the Administrative Code. There's different interpretations. I want to thank our Solicitor, Attorney Menora, and the city Solicitor, Jessica Escri. Over the last two days, I have probably spent more time talking to the two of them than anyone else. We want to make sure that this process is done right, we want to make sure it's done by the letter of the law. And at the end of the day, if it comes down to a decision by council, personally, I want it done in a way where the citizens could have the most say in the process as possible. So as a body, we are going to continue to move forward on putting a process together to get a permanent mayor appointed. In the meantime, I will be continuing to work with all of our department heads in the city on a 24/7 basis whenever needed as acting mayor. And I do want to give a thank you to not only all my colleagues who, we've had a good working relationship, especially during these last few days, trying to come up with a plan on how to get through this, the city employees and also other elected officials. From the county, other municipalities have all reached out to me, offering any help that they could provide during this time of transition in the city. So I want to thank everyone who's offered their assistance, residents. I've heard from probably more people in the last two days than I had in the last two years with suggestions and different ideas and I definitely want to give a thank you to, to everyone who's offered up those suggestions and offered to help, whether it's serving on boards, commissions, had a lot of, a lot of inquiries. So in summary, again, my colleagues have pretty much covered all the points, but in summary, Scranton is a resilient city. There's, despite what transpired the last two days, the city is going to get through this. We are going to select through an open process, a permanent mayor. There may also be a special election, which I'm hopeful that there will be. But during the meantime, the average Scranton resident is not going to see any change in their quality of life from our services in the city. Employees are still working, department heads are still working. And during this time period, I will be spending quite a bit of time in city hall as acting mayor, making sure that any issues that need to be addressed are addressed. Any major decisions that need to be made during this time, I feel it's more appropriate that the permanent mayor makes those decisions, especially decisions regarding long-term contracts. I know the NRS contract came up, I did ask the city solicitor to review that, I know our solicitor's going to review it as well. That's certainly one of many big decisions that are going to be made during the course of the next few months. So again, just want to give a thank you to everyone that's expressed their support and for all my colleagues in working through this process and there'll be more to come soon. Thank you.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth Order 6A, no business at this time. Seventh Order 7A for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption. File of Council Number 67, 2019, amending file of the Council Number 41, 2016, amending file of the Council Number 91, 2002, and ordinance as amended, providing for the establishment of parking meter zones within the city of Scranton, establishing hours of operation, providing for the installation of meters and parking meter rates, authorizing the enforcement of parking ordinances and providing penalties for violations thereof by amending Section 3A to reflect the change in hourly rates, by amending Section 1 to add a definition, Section 7 to modify the use, Section 14A and B to change the temporary suspension, Section 15A and B to address changes for permit parking, add to, excuse me, and to add Section 21, adopting the map for on-street parking, Section 22 to abolish time-zone parking and to create loading zones within the downtown.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, File of Council Number 68, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to approve downtown residential parking rates for the downtown Scranton resident parking program.
I make a motion to amend Item 7B for the following. In the now-therefore clause, omit the second bullet point in its entirety and insert the following. Parking is confined to the following areas and designated spaces on the levels above the ground floor and below the uncovered roof of each of these garages.
Second. On the question?
Yes, could we, Mr. Evans, can you just explain this again and give a little bit?
The, the whole ordinance?
No, not the whole ordinance, no, just, just the amendment.
Okay. Well, the original language stated that the discount rate was for just areas below the roof, didn't define exactly where and I think that the attempt was to push people that were getting this discount all the way up to the upper floors. So what this does is allow anyone that gets this $72 rate to park anywhere from above the ground floor up to the roof level. So it opens up the entire garage, the underutilized areas of the garage.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend a final passage of Item 7B as amended.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 130, 2019, authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal, permit number is noted at Mulberry Street, to relocate the stop bars and perform lane restriping on the westerly approach of Mulberry Street to Jefferson Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 131, 2019, accepting a donation from the Board of Amos Towers, presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $2,500 for the purchase of a 35-millimeter camera and three cordless toolkits to be used in fire investigations.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 132, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank to provide paying agent services for the city of Scranton from August 1, 2019 through December 31, 2024.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 133, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with McClure Company as Energy Services Company for the city of Scranton to provide the most impactful citywide energy-saving strategy to improve the efficiency of city-owned facilities.
What is the recommendation for the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.